Good morning, everybody. I'm sorry, let me try that again. Good afternoon. This meeting is being recorded. So we're called to order. Introduction of laid items. Done. Approval of agenda, recommended resolution that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of council for June 8th, 2021 be approved. Do I have a motion, please? I have a second. Discussion. Opposed. Seeing, hearing none, motion carried. Minutes of previous meeting, none. Petition and delegations. We have Michael A. Engineering here today. We have Mark and Dwayne, I believe. And we have our guest Gerald Wally from the S R D area A. Go ahead, please. Mark and Dwayne.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mark and I'm going to be the primary presenter today. And Dwayne's just in the wings there with his good looks and he's the eye candy of the show. We are here to present you, to you, the initial findings of our flood protection study for the villages Sayward and the Sayward Valley. And I'm just going to share my screen here. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, perfect. And you can hear me clearly?
Yes.
Excellent. So as you all know, we started in on this some time ago. I think we were awarded the project in, at the end of February, beginning of March. And it's funded through the government grants for the provincial flood protection program. And what we're trying to do here is to give an update to the flood hazard mapping that was produced for Sayward Valley in the, in the eighties. And there was a little bit of work done in the nineties to update the hydrology, which would be determination of the amount of flow in the river. But there was no updates to the map. So Dwayne and our team, myself and our team have been working diligently on getting this going for you folks. And we have some initial findings and some, some thoughts and some things to show you. And by all means, ask some questions as we go by, go through, and I will be more than pleased to answer them. So what are we talking about today here? We, we, why re-study what was done in the 1980s? Well, for one, that was 31 years ago. And you know, some things have changed, quite a bit has changed. And there have been some subsequent flooding events since then, new bridges. To my knowledge, there's not been a lot of change in the valley per se, but there has been a few changes in Sayward itself. There was a new school built in 1994. I don't know where the old one was, but it certainly, we have some slides of it underwater in the past. So you know, we need to revisit these things from time to time. And, and we also need to revisit them with an eye for the future. And we'll get into that a little bit as we go. And then I also want to talk about, at the end, about the public engagement process, which was set to start at our first meeting in, in June, June 22nd. And much of this content will be, will be presented to the, the public then. But I wanted to make sure that you folks had a chance to look at it first and ask your questions before we go to the public at large. I do understand that this is a public meeting, but it's primarily the audience in front of me here that I see. So here are the two watersheds that we're dealing with. Actually, it's one watershed consisting of two, two rivers. The Salmon River being the main one, which comes, starts at Kelsey Bay and comes up through the, past the highway and then branches off. And then the White River goes up the hill here towards the southeast or southwest. And then the Salmon River comes to the, to the southeast. And so the drainage area of the Salmon River, the whole thing is, Salmon River is about 1324 square kilometers, consisting of 850 square kilometers of the Salmon River and 367 kilometers, square kilometers of the, the White River. So the last review of the flood discharges for the 1 and 200 year showed that in the Salmon River at the bridge here, after the two rivers come together, the, the flood discharge for a 1 and 200 year event would be approximately 2,330 cubic meters per second. That's a big flood. If you were all around in 90, in 2016, that flood was about half the size. And at the White River, there's a gauge at the, at the forestry bridge there. And we're predicting a 1 and 200 year flood at, in 1995 of about 1,070 cubic meters per second. So they were, you know, these predictions in 95 were based on a record of flows from the two gauges that date back to 1956. So that is 40 years of record. But since then, we've had 30 more years of record in which to enhance our predictions of the, of the discharging. You, you felt, you people, we, we may remember that in 2019, McLehaney did a flood hazard study for the village, which sort of identified those areas where you're most at risk based on previous flooding estimates. And we had a little bit of extra money left over from that grant. So we provided some additional services to update the hydrology from 1995 to the year 2019. You know, it was, it was end of the year. So we were saying 2020 here on the slide. But as you can see, at Salmon River Bridge, the prediction hasn't changed much. Sorry, hasn't changed much at all. 2331 versus 2329. So you know, virtually the same number. And that's primarily because in 2018, we decommissioned the Salmon River diversion dam. And it adds about 150 to 160 cubic meters per second, which would have otherwise been diverted into the Campbell River watershed during the peak flows. The White River has, our predictions on the White River have decreased its amount to about, by about 18% from 1995, down to about 877. It just shows that the longer record we have, the more accurate we can predict our flows. Again, this is the, a, a map of, of the map produced in, in 2019 with the flood risk assessment, showing, you know, the areas where there are key infrastructures within the village itself. And then some spotty stuff within the valley, you know, the gas station at the corner of the highway and the hotel motel, et cetera, which are at risk of being flooded in, in a big flood. Some of the other historical facts are, we have, you know, had significant floods in 75, in 1990 and 2008, 2011, 2014 and 2016. The river spilled its banks and probably created a lot of nuisance flooding because it was more of a, I mean, no flooding is good, but trade, you know, it was a lot lesser flood, let's say, than what could have occurred. 1975 was, was a tremendous amount of water in the valley. And some of the historic photos that we received during this 2019 flood risk assessment show clearly how bad it was. So here's a sample of the original mapping showing the downstream end of the, of the study area. It's the first map of, of the six that are involved in the study. And here's the village at that time, some air photo, photography done in 1979. And the study ends at this yellow line. So we have no predictions from 1980 in the village proper itself. I know the village boundary extends out a little bit, but the density of, of the development is here on, on this hillside. And there's no information from that study for the village. The old hotel is here. And you know, the, the two roads, the, the main logging road, which comes up here and, and the main highway, which comes in here. Things end here. We have good data here. There's, here are these flood contours here showing us what levels we should be building at in these areas and areas upstream. But nothing really shows the impact of the village. And our study will include all of that, plus what's happening in the estuary with respect to the influence of rising tides and storm events, possibly sea level rise and how it will affect water flooding in, in the valley. Coming in, into the future. Also, the original mapping used a much older technology than what's available today. The valley was flown with a laser imaging device in 2019 when we received that data from the S R D. It's wonderful data. We had a ground survey done to confirm the accuracy of the data. And we surveyed the bridges on the, on the river coming into town and the bridge on the highway by the gas station. And we were within four centimeters. Four centimeters is about an inch and a half with accuracy from this plane flying with a laser in it. It's amazing data. And from that, we get a very accurate digital elevation model is what they call it. So they break up this whole valley into one meter by one meter squares and form a grid system throughout the valley, which we then use incorporating into our modeling to allow the flow to find its way through the valley as it would naturally. And you'll see in, in a bit here, when I show you a video, how kind of accurate the predictions really are as we propagate a floodway through the valley. In 1980, they didn't have that technology. They used one dimensional analysis. So there's really not necessarily a lot of error, but it's a lot less refined. And we might as well be using the best technology in our estimates as, as possible. I suppose one could imagine that the earlier slide showed, you know, similar flood predictions from 1980 to 2000. So we're probably not expecting a huge variation in the mapping. But what you will see is how long the flood wave will last, how it interacts with the ocean and how we can, you know, simulate things like the estimates the scientists have out there with respect to sea level rise and climate change and how that may affect the flood levels, the flood areas and the decision-making process moving forward in, in terms of planning for the community in the future. So, you know, the bridge was constructed after 1980. I said the school moved. You know, the town proper itself on the hillside there is pretty much the same, excepting a few houses and buildings since then. And the valley itself has had some sporadic, but not necessarily rapid development. And of course, you know, the population has been pretty stable over the last 10 to 15 years in, in the Sayward and Sayward Valley. And, and still, we, you know, feel very necessary to make sure that the infrastructure we do have in place is sound and above flood levels and, and will last well into the future. And any planning that we do do or developments that may come forward have solid science behind them in terms of what construction levels they should be building to. This is a picture from the 2014 flood that we obtained in, in the 2019 work that the S R D did with the village and the valley. One of the nice folks there brought a whole whack of images from 2014. And we can see there's quite a bit of, of water in that river as the Sayward River meets the White River here at the highway bridge. Sea level rise. What are we going to do about sea level rise? Well, the nice thing is that we have plenty of time to react to it. What we are doing typically in our studies, and we've done a number of these now for Courtney and Tassus and Kitimat and a few other locations in, in B C, is we're using, you know, the pretty much presented science. This ma, this graph here is from 2011 and hasn't really changed much. But what is proving out to be real is that in fact, this line here is showing to prove itself fairly accurate in terms of the growth from 2000 to 2020, in terms of there is actual evidence that the sea levels are rising very marginally at this stage, but they're expected to grow more rapidly by 2,100. Studies are using one meter rise as a guide for the year 2,100. So we're going to start with our, we're going to use that as our planning tool. But we're going to keep in the back of our minds that the science is still evolving, that the evidence is still presenting itself and that we have time to react and plan accordingly as we learn more. So this process of upgrading our mapping and predicting floods in the future will be something that will be ongoing as I see it for, for all of us in, in terms of those coastal communities will, will have to continue to keep their eye on these things to, to make sure they're relevant and accurate. The nice thing is that once you have a model, once you start using predictions from an existing model, the technology behind the predictions of flood elevations and whatnot is, is really state-of-the-art stuff that I don't really see progressing much in the future. So if in five years or 10 years or 15 years, you want to revisit it, you've got a much better place to start from. So although we have, you know, a predicted sea level rise of one meter, there are other factors to consider when, when incorporating an artificial rise of the ocean at the mouth of Kelsey Bay in consideration this model. So, you know, global sea level rise in the Vancouver Island is one meter. But on the East Vancouver Island, we are continuing to see the rising of the land due to the isostatic rebound from, from the ice ages. And their regional adjustment is that by 2,100, the, the whole island or island in general will have raised about eight inches, 0.17 meters. So we deduct that from the sea level rise because the land will actually be higher in 80 years. We use a high, high water tide level of 1.6 meters. And you'll see in the simulation that we used a tide level of about 1.4 meters in, in the simulation I'm about to show you. So that reflects that. But they're predicting on the East Vancouver Island in some areas, storm surge, which is when it wind blows in the northeast direction, especially here in Campbell River. And you have that big fetch of water between us and Powell River. You know, you're going to get the, the wind literally pushing the, the ocean up against shoreline, the eastern shoreline of Vancouver Island by as much as 1.3 meter in a severe storm. Add to that waves that are two feet high, 0.65 meters. And you get, you know, this guide to start thinking about building your buildings for the future above five meters. Now, we are going to get more specific for Sayward in terms of, we have a subconsultant currently working on these numbers here, the storm surge and the wave effect to see what exactly they will do, given the exact location parameters of Kelsey Bay. A much smaller fetch, as you know, but there are a lot of tide effects when the wind blows from the north and the tide is, is ebbing, moving north. Or when the, what I'm trying to say is when the tides move opposite of the wind, you get a, an exacerbating effect on the waves. I'm sure if any of you have been fishing out there and gone through the strait, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. When the tide's going with the wind, the waves tend to lay down because the, the currents are, are moving with the wind. So all of these types of things are subconsultant, Great Pacific, you see them here, are working on that. We haven't been able to coordinate any of their results. We're expecting them in the next week or so. But when we do, I'm sure these numbers will change and we will come up with a more precise recommendation for the village of Sayward at the mouth of Kelsey Bay in terms of minimum flood construction levels as a guard against rising sea levels and storm surges and, and wave effects. So the other thing is climate change. There's been plenty of evidence since the 1980s and 90s to see that this is actually a phenomenon that is taking place and happening. This graph shows a number of lines. The blue line is the average rainfall for the period between 1980 and 2010. And for each month, January to December, let's take November here because we have the greatest contrast in, in what's happening in, in the wettest month of the year. So in 1980, the precipitation in millimeters per day was, you know, on average was about eight, eight or nine. And this isn't your big storm. This is your average daily storm in November. And then in 2010 to 2039, and we're in the middle of that, we see a bit more rain coming on average, maybe 8.5 or nine. And then the next 20, next 30 years will be a little bit more rain. And then the next 30 years from 27 to 2,100 will be a little bit more rain. We're looking at possibly in the wettest months of the year, up to 20% more rainfall, which will only exacerbate the flooding in the Sayward River or the Salmon River, especially in those areas which are above this five meter mark. Because they will be influenced about, by the capacity of the river and the river banks and not so much about the ocean backing up into the channel and flooding Kelsey Bay. So we will take both of these factors into account. And we're going to do a number of iterations based on varying levels of ocean and varying degrees of floods coming down the, the river. And then taking the worst case scenarios for each to determine the flood mapping results for the village of Sayward and the Sayward Valley. So what I'm about to show you is sort of where we are right now. We've gone through the hydrology and we know that our peak flood for 20, the year, for the 2020 year, this year, if we were, or next year, if we were to have a, this fall, 2,100, 2021 or 2022, if we were to get a real big rainstorm that equaled the 1 and 200 year event, there'd be about 2,300 cubic meters of water coming down the channel. So this black line represents the flood wave. You know, we start at a normal 100 cubic meters on a normal winter day, and then all of a sudden it starts to rain and it starts to rain really hard. And then the, the water flows and the river build up until, over a two-day period, we get to the peak. And then over another two-day period, we go back down. And this is typically how things happen. This red line, I hope it's red because I'm colorblind. It could be orange or green. I don't know. This line.
It's orange.
Okay. This orange line represents the flood wave in November of 2016, or sorry, January of 2016, the last time that the river spilled its banks. I have a, another picture I want to show you here, which shows this is our flood hazard study. And the pink area here shows what the S R D has estimated as the extent of flooding in 2016. The blue hatch line, the light blue hatch line is the 1980 limits of flooding. So all else being equal, this is the pink area, the maximum flooding from the pink area, which occurs when you get the maximum wave coming through. And this is the big blue area. So, you know, larger extent, deeper waters flooding. This wavy line is what's happening in Kelsey Bay. And this is what was happening in Kelsey Bay in 2016. We used this number, which is about, over here is the tide level in meters, about a geodetic elevation of 1.4 meters. That's a fairly high tide as I showed in the chart a couple of slides ago. You know, high, high water level is 1.6. So we're pretty close to a very high tide in, in this scenario. So I'm going to try and run this thing and by golly, I hope it works. So this is, you know, an air photo with, with our flood model superimposed upon it. Now, as you can see, the river's quite full already in the middle of my simulation. So on this graph, we're somewhere right about here. We're on the rising limb of the graph. There are a couple of areas which have entered into some of those old oxbows and, and whatnot. And we've got a high, high tide. So Kelsey Bay is pretty full. Okay? I'm going to run this. I have to run it all the way through. And then what I'm going to do is go back to the beginning and click through a few parts of the event. And, and I'll explain it as I go that way. But it's about a minute and a half. It's not very long. And it'll show you how the river valley behaves when a big flood wave runs through it. Here you can see some flooding near the highway from the White River as it peaks. And then as we get a little on time, this is the timestamp over here. So we're about 24 hours into it. All of a sudden, the Salmon River peak comes through and starts spilling the banks all over the place. And you can see those areas which are marginally high, they kind of stay dry for quite a long time until we get to the big peak, which is right about now, at 12 o'clock on January the 4th in this simulation. And then it starts to subside. By the time we get to the end, you'll see the rivers are back to about normal. And there will be a bunch of puddles within the model because they don't drain out. They don't have any way of draining once they fill these lower areas where there's old oxbows or depressions in the, in the valley. Because the river's been wandering around this valley for eons. You see it starting to dry out. And so this whole simulation is about three and a half days of a simulated flood wave. So if we start over and I click to this point in time, early on, we can see that the White River is starting to flood. And this little farm area, south of the, of the highway is the first place where we get some extra flooding. These areas here are probably little off channels that have some, some rainwater in them. And not much is happening in the bay because it's, it's basically under flood tide. So if we get closer here, maybe back here, we can see that now we're starting to get some overbank flow in the river around the wire cable restaurant. And we're starting to breach the highway here near the gas station. Moving ahead about eight hours, we now have Moving ahead about eight hours, we now have full breaching between the highway and the main oxbow in the river. Where there's a lot of low lying land. In the village itself, we see that the, the road is still dry. The area by the old hotel is beginning to become more and more inundated. And the pond there below the municipal building is completely full. I'm going to go right straight to the peak, which is right about here. Two o'clock in the afternoon on January 4th, we're into the simulation a little over a day. And we've, we've now at the peak. We can see that we have, this is the gradation of the, of the depth of water. So very light blue is almost zero. And the darker the blue gets, the dark, the deeper the water is. So it's fairly uniform depth of water around. Of course, at the periphery, we're almost at zero. And at the ocean, of course, we're greater than 15 meters for sure. But there's not a lot of pockets of dry land in here, right? Village proper is still very dry. And that can be somewhat misleading in the fact that, you know, we've been told by several people in, in the village that, you know, and the valley for that matter is that a lot of these side channels, because of all the rain, they're starting to fill up and exacerbate all the storm water in the village. For the purpose of this study, that's a whole separate issue. We can't simulate that properly to this level. So we're more worried about what's happening in the river and how it's spilling the banks rather than all of the little channels and culverts in this, in the village and, and throughout the valley that may be causing you other localized flooding problems. Okay? So then from the peak, we get a fairly rapid decline in our flood levels. And you can see that some of these oxbows, they remain full just because in the terrain model, there's no outlet. We, we can't simulate every little culvert that might be connecting a road to, to, to the stream. Although we know that most of this stuff will in time, you know, make its way to, to the river. So that's kind of our initial modeling. One of the other things that I'd like to, to sort of highlight for, for you listening here tonight is that once you get past this location here where the, the roads come closer together again, where, you know, there's the old hotel and whatnot. The influence of the ocean in the year 2020 and 202100, 2021, sorry, this year, without considering sea level rise or any of that kind of stuff, we start to, the, the ocean starts to have less and less influence on, on the river flow. And by the time you get to this oxbow here, where I think the first bridge crossing is, you are completely out of the influence of tide levels. And all of this flooding is derived from the flow in the river. Meaning in this area, it's a combination of water backing up into the channel and piling up the flow coming down. And in the area up here by the, by the highway and above, above this line here, this, this oxbow here, we're considering no influence from the ocean backing up the water. Everything is because the channel has no capacity to hold all the water in it and it's flooding its banks. At the peak, you can see widespread flooding and it's amazing how similar this is to 1980. Again, I'm going to go back to this picture here. And you can see that in my legend, I've got this peak area flooding in the dark blue hatched this way versus what was shown in 1994. Actually, this should say 1980, the 20 year floodplain from the original mapping. And you can see that we're pretty close. There are some areas in 1980, like here by the Big Tree Main where they were predicting more widespread flooding than we are. And then you can see it, I'm sorry, oh darn it. In some areas, like in this area here, where we have a little bit more flooding from our, and it's very marginal from our study versus what they're predicting in 1980. Again, here we're a little less, we're on the fringe here and we're quite a bit less there. The lighter blue stuff is extending beyond what we're predicting in our modeling. So those are where the areas are refinement are. However, any of the existing developments and roads within the valley are really quite subject to some flooding. Going back to my video, there are areas on the Campbell Riverside of the bridge in here where there are quite a few homes that seem to be fairly high and dry in this scenario. So I would imagine that no matter what happens here, these houses are pretty good. Until maybe we decide to add 20% more flow in the river because it's going to start raining a lot harder in the winter. And we'll see what happens there. We may find that some of these homes may in fact be jeopardy, in jeopardy as we move forward in time. These are the next steps in the modeling process. So what are the next steps? Again, we have to complete the modeling of the ocean levels in Kelsey Bay. I mentioned that earlier. Our, our partners at Great Pacific are completing that as we speak. And we need to refine the model to determine clearly flood extents from 2100, 2021 and 2100. I hope I don't get you guys too confused about that because 2021 and 2100, if you say them fast enough, they almost sound the same. So but we're looking at this year, what is the condition that we're looking at? And we're going to look at 2100 as a, you know, future crystal balling based on what science we have available today. And we're going to come up with a map like this. Now this shows Tassus, the village of Tassus and the Tassus River. But this is kind of the end product that we will produce for Sayward and, and, and the valley. This shows, this blue line shows the extent of the flooding in Tassus in the year 2100. And the green line or orange line shows the extra flooding that will happen when we consider sea level rise and, excuse me, and, and more water coming down the river due to climate change. That's this extra extent of land. So right now in Tassus, if you're living in this light blue shaded area and your house is below six meters to 5.5 meters in this area, you're going to get flooded. That's what this map shows. And this is the style of map that we will produce for you for the entire study area from Kelsey Bay to Big, Big Tree Main up by the end of the forest road there. This will be the set of maps and this will be the guide for planning things like mitigation strategies, whether they are to protect. And in the case of Tassus, if any of you've been there lately, they have this flood wall here, which we are currently planning on helping them build a little higher or accommodate, meaning maybe we we build future buildings to these levels and allow people to actually continue to live in this area. Or we retreat, which means or avoid, which is kind of the same thing. Maybe we don't allow redevelopment here. Maybe we change the purpose of this land to more of a seasonal thing where you know, you can bring in your fifth wheel and have full services for the period between March and September. And in October, November, we don't have that sort of land available because of the risk of flooding in the future or the risk of winter inundation due to sea level rise. These are some of the things that Tassus is wrestling with. And these are some of the things that we need to approach the public with in terms of, you know, hey, you know, Mr. Jones, you live in a, the floodplown area, your house is a, a little lower than it should be. You know, when it comes to rebuilding that house or protecting your house, you know, you have some options. If there are undeveloped lands, maybe we reserve them as more seasonal use or more or other uses like agriculture or those types of things. These are the conversations we need to have as we move forward through the study. And we're going to introduce these things on June 22nd to the public as alternatives to see what they think. And it was amazing in Tassus that the people who showed up were generally living in this low lying area. And we're generally like, yeah, I get it. I understand. I'm at risk. I need to make a plan. We need to make a plan as a village. And you know, they're doing it, which is what we have to, to do with the results we, we find in, in, in the Sayward Valley. Along the lines, the protection issue, some of the, we, we had proposed that we would take a look at some protection options for those areas that are most vulnerable and worth protecting, like key transportation links or maybe little denser areas of development or higher vulnerability areas of development. And I could imagine that being, for instance, the, the gas station in the hotel and the little development around the intersection with the highway. Maybe we consider some sort of a little ring dike around that structure so that in the event of a flood, they can be protected by quickly barricading off their, their driveways and keeping the, the river out. Right? Rather than suffering tons of damage to their infrastructure and you know, having fuel spilled all over the, the natural environment because of their, their fuel tanks get inundated and stuff like that. That's just a total spitball of an idea. We have to take a look at these things and these are kind of the next steps. With this mapping and with these ideas of protect, accommodate, or retreat or avoid, we have helped the little village of Tassus with updating their planning and their O C P bylaws and their floodplain bylaw. And part of our study is to help the village of Sayward and the S R D in a similar mode with respect to those areas in the valley which are most at risk to flooding. And, and it all starts with the map. It all starts with the recommended flood levels and, and we work from there. Also, we use the study for some emergency planning. We did help the, the village of Tassus. And we had talks with Sean from the S R D regarding the emergency preparedness, emergency route selection out of the village. Of course, there's only one way out of the village. Well, there's, there's three ways out of the village of Tassus. There's two ways out of the village of Sayward and there are some logging roads that may hook up to Highway 19A that we could consider making sure they're passable all year round. So that in an emergency, we can still get people in and out of the village or out of the valley. Here we have a picture from 1975 flood. This is the old school. Can, can you folks tell me where it was located?
Mr. Wally up there would probably be the one to ask on that one.
I can respond if you wish. The old school is just Campbell Riverside of the junction of the Salmon River Logging Road and the highway coming into Sayward.
Oh, so kind of where the hotel is sort of in that area?
No, quite a bit farther. Well, it would be east than that, but came down to the junction of the logging road, the paved logging road. Road that comes into the village.
Right.
Just below that about 100 yards on the south side.
Okay, let's see if we can pinpoint that on a map.
Just below what's called the Salmon River Bridge.
Okay. In here?
Just to move down a tiny little bit. All right, it's up there.
There's the bridge.
Do you see it's Frenchman's Road there?
Yeah.
All right. So that field to the right of Frenchman's Road, just go a little bit with your arrow to the right, down a bit. Down to the right, right there.
Okay.
Right there, that building.
Right. Well, that would certainly have been under, underwater in 1975.
That's there in my canoe.
There you go. And the, very much would be underwater in, in a similar flood if we had one this fall. This area is very prone to flooding as, as we have, you know, all practical knowledge of and you know, the modeling shows that what, what's been happening in the past is, is going to happen in the future. So the good news is that most of this is, is all good. The little mall here is in, very much in jeopardy. This development here or housing or whatever it is, I can't recall. There's a couple of homes in there and some trailers, I guess. They're very much in the, the eye of the storm. The hotel site here is very much at risk to flooding in, in our estimation. Anything that's between the, the the road and the main is very much at risk to flooding. And, and then when they cross, anything between the main and the river is very much at risk to flooding. And I do believe the main even floods in this area here, cutting off both ways into the village of Sayward from the highway. Which you know, is something we need to take a look at in terms of, of the risk and what we want to do about mitigating that. So we will only touch on this as part of our study in terms of the use of the mapping and the modeling for the purposes of emergency planning. And we will highlight those areas which we think will be most at risk, like I just said, in regards to how to deal with them to either remove the risk, i.e. raise the roads or maybe dike next to the roads in order to protect things and allow people to pass in and out of the village on an emergency basis. Those are the kinds of considerations that will come out of this, this study. And then the part, public participation piece, you know, has somewhat commenced already in, in terms of our 2019 study where we went out to the public and we talked to them about historic flooding already. Four or five individuals brought in some albums and that paper cut, paper newspaper printout that I, I showed you just the last slide. Here is a homestead in, in the valley. I don't know exactly where this is. This is from the 1990 flood. All of these things really help in, in determining the impact. All of these things really help in in determining the impact to the valley and impact to the residents. And the things that we are looking for and trying to to show people is both the depth of flooding in order to be able to protect individual farmlands and the duration, so how do we protect? You know, a low lying residence like this. These are individual choices, but they may want to do a little ring dyke around their house or in terms of redevelopment, build it up on on to a height of land. There's all kinds of of options for those people and we will be able to show them definitively how we think the depth of flooding and duration of flooding on their land will be and then try to get some feedback from them in terms of potential bylock updating and, you know, the long term planning impacts, we'll be able to show them that in twenty twenty one and twenty one hundred, you know, if and when this climate change becomes a significant reality and all of a sudden their doorstep is really underwater. At least we give them some time to plan as to how to mitigate that, right? Whether that's again ring diking or raising their home or however they they feel necessary to do so. So that's my presentation, that's where we are today. As I've said before, we're we're going to take this presentation on on the on the road to have a town hall meeting on the twenty second as our first go around, I do intend to have one or two more of these movies available. And what I'd like to do is probably show a little bit more definition in this area and a little more definition in this area over a couple of scenarios so that I really give people a feel for what it is they're up against and you know, have them confirm some of the things that we're showing in terms of depth of flooding and the duration of flooding and and their memories. And then following that, we will start to quiz them through some online polling and whatnot about preferences for how to deal with land development and and ongoing issues with flooding in the valley, whether that is moving language into the bylaw that gives them some power to to repurpose their land et cetera, et cetera, over over time and stuff, there there's a lot of mechanisms that we need to talk about and and that's what's going to happen on the twenty second. I open it up for questions or or comments.
We'll start with Counselor Craig.
Okay, thank you, Mister Mayor, I actually have a few questions for you, Mark, thank you very much for your survey. The first question I have is 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 one question in basically three parts, they all merge together, the question was, how is our roads at the peak? At the peak flood level, are our roads passable, we have two escape routes and how do they look, are they passable?
The answer to that is completely no.
The second part of that question is, do we have on the first flooding area some way to monitor that area for a high water first alert system?
Yes, the province does that for you. The province in in a fall measures expected rainfall and reservoir levels and throughout the winter, they measure snowpack and weather conditions. And if there's a large snowpack and a huge pineapple express coming through, they will issue warnings, localized flood warnings throughout the island and unfortunately, we don't get a lot of time, we might get a week or less time to prepare ourselves for such an event. And it's it's really the nature of the climate around here, it's not like on the prairies or Manitoba where, you know, and I say that because I I used to live in Winnipeg and I I lived through the flood of nineteen ninety seven there. The peak of that flood happened on April twenty eighth nineteen ninety seven and the warnings came out in middle of March, so the province along the Red River had six weeks to prepare. We won't get that luxury here because we can't reliably predict the effect of a a huge pineapple express coming across the island with any accuracy, you know, beyond seven days, so, but there are definitely people in the province, in the provincial flood emergency branch watching things and providing warnings throughout the province. They they they, of course, do much better predictions on spring freshettes and the Prince George area and and those kinds of areas. But we just simply don't have those predictive tools here when it comes to the weather and we are really driven by weather events rather than snow melt or spring freshet, as you can tell, the floods happen in November, December, and January, right?
With respect, sir, what I specifically meant though is in your simulation, you said there was a farm area that got hit first. If that farm area had some kind of a an alarm system at that point right there where we could tell right at that point where the water levels are and we all need to be prepared from that first farm area to the time between that point and our roads getting unpassable, how much time do we have to evacuate?
I can do one better than that. There is a there is a flow measuring statement station on the Salmon River. Just upstream of the big tree, big tree main bridge. Okay, it takes about six hours for the floodway to to go from that bridge to the highway bridge. So I mean, if we are experiencing high river levels here, you have approximately six hours to move.
Okay.
You might have ten because you still have another seven or eight kilometers of river before you hit the village proper, but and I'm 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 much less concerned about the people on the east side of the river between the highway and the Salmon River upstream of the Highway nineteen A Bridge in the valley because they have you know, they they all have driveways that ra- rise up to the road that might be what, a couple hundred meters long, right? So and there's very little development, if any, on the west side of the road, that's all. That's all forestry land, so there's a couple of of buildings there, but I we would have to assess those individually to see if they're they're vulnerable. But really, it is the village that is the most vulnerable because both the the forest Forest Service Road and the highway the highway road. They get inundated and and quite significantly in this very significant flood.
Thank you very much, sir, I will yield the rest of my time to Mister Wally at this point, sir.
Go ahead, Mister Wally.
Yeah, just a a couple of comments and questions, first of all, in response to the topic you're just talking about there. The highway floods well before the logging road flood, so by the time the highway flooded, if the water's still rising, you've usually got about eight hours before it's going to flood on the logging road.
That that's correct, you you are very much correct, sir, and our our modeling shows exactly that, so we can provide that guidance in terms of emergency response. So, yeah, you are exactly correct.
Thank you, and then the next thing is the big flood of seventy five. At that point in time, the flow channels of the river were hundreds of meters wider than they are today because of the massive ramps that were built for the highway bridge and for this last bridge by the escuary. So those massive ramps will, in effect, I would expect work to the dyke. And I'm not sure what effect that would have, I wonder if you've had any consideration of that.
That's a good point, actually, and this is what I know from my twenty five years of studying floods and and river channels. When you get to a point in the river where you have this mess of a flood. What happens is the overbank area has some flow in it, definitely waters moving across the land. But at a much slower rate because there's all kinds of things in the way and all kinds of friction from the the grass and the trees and the shrubs and all that kind of stuff. So what really happens is the main flow still concentrates itself in the channel proper. The rest of it is just sort of, you know, a bathtub or marsh area that moves more gently in 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 the manner of moving downstream. So saying that, as long as the bridge openings are sufficient enough. Yes, they do have an effect and we can show you that at each little bridge at each bridge, there's a little jump in the river because there there is a restriction there, but it's it's really quite small and the effect of it is quite small linearly, linearly, meaning if the bridge at the Salmon River Bridge there, that one where there's two little bridges in 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 a row. If there's an effect of of the bridge backing up the water on the upstream side a foot within a hundred or two hundred meters because of the slope of the river, and I know it looks flat, but there's actually slope in the river. Because at the highway, the river bottom elevation is at fourteen meters above sea level. And at the Kelsey Bay, it's at zero, so, you know, there is slope to it. That effect of that one foot rise of backwater due to that restriction in the road pretty much becomes negated. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I do, thank you. In that seventy five flood, that photo you had of the school, the water was about three feet deep there at the school. And it flowed right across the road, so you got probably a good hundred yards of three foot depth of water and the current was strong as it as it crossed there. But anyway, my second point was if we have an increase in rain and also have an increase in temperature, that might be a good thing because historically, the floods have been caused when we've had heavy snowfalls and then that followed by heavy rain and that heavy snowfall would melt, accumulate with the rain and and dramatically increase the flows quickly. Where if the snow isn't on the mountains, then the rain isn't quite so serious.
You know what, Director Wally, that is something that we would really need to think about in our estimation and that's a very good point and I hope my colleague Dwayne is making notes here because I will have to, you know, I will have to consult with my colleagues in 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 our organization and we have some crackerjack guys that are helping us out with this in in the Vancouver office. And you're you are making a very good point there and I think that needs to be considered, so even if we have you know, fifteen to twenty percent more rainfall in any given November. If seasonal temperatures are also rising and we don't have the same type of snowpack, we definitely would get less of a flood wave and and that's something we definitely need to consider, so that's a good point, thank you for raising that.
My last little comment was just that you had mentioned the tide doesn't extend that far beyond the first bridge, actually, it does, about a kilometer above that bridge. I live right on the river there above stream, about half a kilometer, so it goes a good kilometer up, my my pleasure totally title.
Okay, I will, I will take that in our advisement as well because you know, this is kind of what I'm I'm seeing in in our modeling and and we might have to make an adjustment to that depending on what we get from our our friends at Great Pacific and I want to go, I want to go back to your first point in terms of this picture and this being the road. And you said there was quite a bit of flow down that road, well.
Down the road, but across the road at right angles, a very strong current.
Yes, I could see that happening because there's no trees or bush in here to slow things down, so there may very well be you know, a fairly strong current moving across that oxbow and and utilizing that overland flow as a flow path. Yeah, definitely, yeah. So, again, good points. And and this is the type of thing that we're looking for from the public at large, right, is this sort of insight to help us in our predictions and and our consideration of of the reality of the situation. I mean, I've been to Sayward many times, but have I lived through a flood once in Sayward? No. And, you know, we're all ears to these great suggestions and this local knowledge about how things flow and whatnot. And one thing we can do, Director Wally, is with this computer program is show the flow arrows and that might be a a good thing to run by someone like yourself who has good local knowledge about how the how, you know, localized flooding can can be can be viewed. Let me consider that as 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 being a useful tool or just, you know, maybe we just ask these types of questions during our town hall to get people saying, well, yeah, well, I live by such and such a road and whatnot, and this is kind of what happens when it floods and take all that sort of information down and when we run our models away from the public, we can see just either how much truth there is in in what people are telling us or how off our modeling might be and how much we can try to tweak it to make it reflect more like reality, so those are really good points.
And if I might just conclude saying that you make a really good point there because when it floods in the Sayward Valley, nobody can go up and down the highway. Look to anybody else's situation, so each person has their own individual story.
You bet, yeah. So, you know, I think I think this study will really help the the village and the S R D with their emergency planning, with determining flood construction levels in the valley, which will be very important for future development, anybody who you know, wants to live in a peaceful place on a large plot of land, they do come up once in a while there and and, you know, we want them to build to a safe height so that their at least their personal property isn't damaged, even though they may be stranded for a couple of days during a flood. You know, these are realities that they may want to accept should the village and the S R D you know, incorporate the bylaws in such a way that allows them to to do the development, these are all the kinds of conversations that we have to have.
Counselor Craig, you have another question?
Yeah, I just need to clarify, in in your proposal, I have your proposal here. You talked about two things and I just, if you could just layman's term it to me. What is a bathymetry survey and a fluvial geomorphology assessment?
Okay, so a bathymetric survey is a survey of the bottom of the river. A bathtub, the bottom of the bathtub. Okay, so we've we've completed that survey, we did it with a kayak and a G P S unit and a little laser. And man, it works like a hot damn, I'll tell you. I'm telling you, some of this equipment that we have these days is just just absolutely blow you away for what you can get for twenty thousand bucks, it's just amazing. So we integrated that with the land three D model, which we got from the S R D, so now we have the river channel proper and the Kelsey Bay proper, you know, as best we can, we didn't it's not like a full swath laser, it is an individual set of points, but we went back and forth and we got a a good density of points throughout the the reach. Now, we didn't go very far up the Highway nineteen A Bridge up the Salmon or White Rivers because the lidar was taking in midsummer, very low flow and the channel is very shallow, so it's like discounting a couple of drops in the bathtub in terms of our modeling, you know what I'm trying to say? So, but we're very confident, we've got a really good three D model of the valley, a fluvial geomorphological study is
That's a mouthful, man.
Yeah, is a a study of how the river behaves within the valley, so the movement of the river, the meandering of the river, how it displays a meander cutoff, you know, where you displays a meander cutoff, you know, where you um, if you have a big oxbow, sometimes the river will find its way right through eventually through that middle of that oxbow and over time, you know, cut it right off, and then that oxbow becomes a um, an off-channel or a a piece of excuse me, a piece of land. So it it, what we'll do there basically is study some of the air photos from the forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties up to today and see how mobile a channel is and how that might affect the decision-making process in terms of river setbacks. Um, you know, flood construction levels very near the river and all that kind of stuff. Again, it provides another level of planning and assessment to to the village and to the S R D about what's happening in the valley over time and and um, we just did this for the Oyster River for uh, the S R D on Glenmore Road. And you know, there was an oxbow there that just just got cut off uh, not more than 10 years ago, where the the river used to come right in along the Glenmore Dyke. It now goes straight several hundred meters away, and we were able to show the S R D that that dyke didn't need any raising really until hell, all hell breaks loose in in the future when climate change really becomes really as bad as they say it's going to be.
Awesome. Thank you.
So that that that's those two things. So there will be a small section in in the report with some historic air photos and, you know, a bit of an assessment of how mobile the channel is and some recommendations for setbacks. So that when you do your floodplain bylaw, you can say, you know what? If you're going to plan to put your house within 30 meters of the bank, you should get a professional to really look at that and tell the village that it's going to be okay because it'll be more of a global assessment. And you may want to have a development per- permit process where you could allow people to relax those rules if there's good scientific evidence to do so. And we do that all the time for people who want to live on the Oyster River, for instance. Because they're yeah, because there are some areas where, you know, there's bedrock right there or or in the case of the Oyster River, shale rock that really keeps the bank at bay. And then there's other areas on the Oyster River and the Salmon and and the White River where there are gravel banks and they're continually moving and eroding and um, creating sandbars here and all that kind of stuff. That's what geomorphology is.
Do we have any other questions? I'm sorry, uh, C A O, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Baker, and thank you for the presentation. Uh, for counsel's benefit, I just wanted to add a little piece. Uh, Mark just referenced development permits. It's it's a tool that's in the local government that the village doesn't really uh, have right now in the official community plan as a tool that's widely used, but basically, it's a it's a provision to provide specific conditions and an alternative and a sort of a layer on top of zoning uh, for specific uses. So it provides an opportunity to to establish specific and tailored conditions to enable certain developments which would otherwise uh, not be allowed or which would be sort of arbitrary and uh, used as part of the overall zoning that would be applied to every property. So I just thought I'd clarify that because we're doing our O C P right now, and urban systems may recommend some development permit areas. Um, and so this is what they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, is there any other questions?
If I might just add to what Anne just said, you know, in Campbell River here, we have development permits along the oceanfront so that a person has to build their home or their apartment building um, with some good guidance for the environment and potential sea level rise. We have development permits along all the creeks and rivers that allow people to to develop along there with certain guidelines, and if they want to alter those guidelines, like flood construction levels and stuff, they have to hire an engineer or a geotechnical guy who studies the earth to to help them prove to the city that it's okay to do what they want to do, that it doesn't harm the environment, that their property is safe, and you know, that the the land is is suitable for the intended use, meaning if you put a house there, it's not going to sink into the ground or float away in a flood. And I think that's a very, very helpful tool for any municipality or any regional district to utilize in their bylaw process because if you don't have it, people will take advantage of the situation. And then when the caca hits the fan and they get in trouble, you know, flood or whatever, they look to you and me and the rest of the province to help bail them out, right? So I really think it's a responsible thing for a jurisdiction to to consider in 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 their bylaws and their and their development permitting uh, processes. So just another two cents on top of that for you.
Great. I want to um, thank you very much for the presentation. I want to thank you all for being there. And um, is there any other questions? Are we good? No. Again, thank you very much to Mark and Dwayne, and thank you, Director Wally, for joining us. Um, excellent information. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, good night. I hope to see you all at uh, on the 22nd to help participate in this town hall, and uh, we'll sign off now then. Ciao.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay. So moving on, correspondence. None. Counsel report? None. Reports at committee? None. Mayor's report? None. Unfinished business? None. Staff report? None. Bylaws? None. New business? None. Public questions period? None. In camera? None. Adfirmment, recommended resolution that the June 28th, 2021 Committee of the whole meeting be adjourned. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Did we already lose Counselor Craig? Yep. So we have a second discussion. Opposed? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. You have a good night.